Madam Clerk?
I believe we have a quorum.
Madam President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order, but before we get moving with official business, I would like to turn the mic over to President Gilkerson for some comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much, President Bonilla and trustees. Tonight, I'm with you, and thank you to Trustee Brown for helping support this effort. Yesterday, we got news that our former Associated Students of Laney College president, Keith Welch, passed away from a heart attack. Keith, I'm going to start. Anyways, Keith and I met weekly. He was amazing. He was an incredible student leader with a heart for serving others at his core. He was a homeless student who literally rode on the bart every day and stayed every night to serve students and provide food. He wanted to eradicate hunger and food insecurity on our campus. He graduated with a Culinary Arts degree in 2018, and he helped start the Laney Eagles Food Pantry at our campus. He served students through his culinary program. He started that, and actually, him and students served over 12,000 students in one semester. He worked tirelessly with the ASLC and with folks like Ayesha and many others to just consistently, consistently put students first. In every meeting, he sat on all these hiring committees as well with me to hire administrators and faculty. He was a light and a beacon of hope for many in our community, and I felt like the best honor to do was to play just a portion of the graduation speech he gave in May so that you see he's the reason why we do the work that we do. And so, I thought I would share this now with you all.
Don't let anybody tell you you cannot accomplish something in your life. You can do anything if you set your mind to it. I am not special. I just saw that students needed help. Laney College has everything on its campus to make you have a wonderful life and to help you create your goals. It's a family atmosphere. Thank you to Chef Jackson. Thank you to Chef Roji. Especially, thank you to the culinary arts students that helped me prepare this food. Thank you to all the elected ALC officer and the ladies students yourself that supported our endeavors. A special thanks goes out to Director Gary Albury for his guidance and support. One last thank you to our beautiful President, Dr. Gilkerson, for allowing student governors to represent the students with no interference. And finally, thank you to my family for their support. You can also support my future fan business endeavor as Big Papa Louisiana Fried Chicken. Because of my experience here, I have a different outlook now. I hope you do too. Being disabled enforced me to educate myself, but I know this led me to become a better person. I have evolved into a better brother, son, uncle, and friend. I share what I have with others, and I encourage more. Sometimes, you are living in the moment, and you don't understand the importance of that moment. Today is an important day for celebration. I know I will. I did not intend my high school graduation because I graduated in high school. There was no pictures of me in my gown. There was no pictures of me hanging with my classmates. Now, I finally have my pictures. Congratulations to the class of 2018 of Laney College, and enjoy your day. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Keith.
Thank you, President Gilkerson, for sharing that. And if we could just have a moment of silence. Thank you, President Gilkerson, for sharing that, and if we can just have a moment of silence. Thank you. We will start off with a pledge of allegiance, and I've been asked to make sure my mic is on, and it is. Everyone stand, please, and if we can have it led by Trustee Brown, please. Thank you. Madam Vice President, do we have a readout from closed session, please?
We do. Thank you. Recommendation to appoint Dr. Fran White, Acting Chancellor, beginning March 1st, with salary and terms to be determined. Unanimous vote was had. Madam President, that concludes the closed session readout for tonight.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda. And for the purpose of discussion, I have some changes. I would like to move 5.1 and 7.4 to action. 5.1 and 7.4 to action. And please also note for the record that 9.1 and 10.1 have been removed from the agenda.
Madam President, can we also move item 4.3 to action? And because I have to leave this meeting early tonight, if we, if there is an objection, if we could move it to the beginning of the agenda or shortly after presentations, I would appreciate that.
Let's go ahead and move it to, right, can we move 4.3 to... Is it appropriate to move it to the Chancellor's report? Just to action? Well, it's in consent right now, so we can move it to action? And then we'll just move it up right after presentation. Okay.
Thank you. And just for members of the audience, item 4.3 is the contract with the Community College Collaborative Brain Trust.
Okay, thank you. Can we do a roll call vote, please, if there are no other questions?
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez Yuen?
Yes.
Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes, and approval, I need a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved.
So they moved in second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Gonzalez Yuen? Trustee Napolia Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you, and we will now move to 2.7, Associated Student Government Reports.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. So for February, for Black History Month, we had a host of events almost every week hosted by BSU, supported by ASLC and the library. And for this upcoming Women's History Month for March, ASLC is planning a host of events, as well as preparing for the 2019-2020 ASLC elections and scholarship distribution. During our February 14th Valentine's Day event, we actually handed out a survey to students, and I just wanted to share some of the results that are kind of like shocking, I guess. Thirteen percent of the people that took the, took our survey self-identified as homeless, so thirteen percent of the hundred students that took the survey. One of the questions was, should Laney College have student housing? And eighty-five percent of the current students actually said yes, they should. And then we also actually surveyed a small population of high school students that are visiting the campus, and ninety percent of those students said yes, they'd like to see Laney College have on-campus housing. Yeah, that's about it. The rest, I can email to you guys' emails. Thank you.
Good evening, Chancellor, Chancellor's Office, and Board of Trustees. Thank you. We've held various events during this past month at Berkeley City College for Black History Month. It was very successful. The Muslim Student Association and Ignite to Civic Engagement Student Club partnered to hold movie nights. The Black Student Union hosted several events that showcased the history of black art, fashion, and music. On Thursday, they held a performance expo. This Thursday, they'll be holding a performance expo that showcases talents of various young and upcoming artists. The most, the Muslims, the MSA also held power talks that featured black Muslim legacies. We also celebrated Lunar New Year. Students were taken around the world by the International Office, and they were able to see different countries and how they celebrated their new year. Also, the student government elections have been, are underway. So far, we have twenty-three students that have signed up for student government. And they are also where the applications have been extended to March 5th, and elections will be held the 16th and the 17th on campus and as well as online. We are also very excited for Women's History Month. The Women's Leadership Club is holding a feminine hygiene product drive for the whole month of March. The hygiene products drive will, the donations will go to the youth engagement advocacy housing, also known as YEAH, in the city of Berkeley, and this is an emergency shelter program for youth in Berkeley. The drive will be promoted during three events that are being held for the month of March. March 6 is International Women's Fashion Show. March 13, the screening of It's a Girl documentary will be held. March 20 is Career Day, with women leaders will be visiting Berkeley City College, and we will end the celebration with a packaging party to pack all the feminine hygiene products we've collected on Wednesday, March 27. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. I will be giving an update on ASCOA. So this month, we hosted a successful Valentine's Day party on the 14th. Students enjoyed several varieties of treats while making cards, which were meant to give appreciation to loved ones. On March 7, we are having an ASCOA Sister Circle in honor of Women's Month. We will have an open mic to express the significance of woman empowerment, and we'll be providing food, hygiene kits, and prizes. On March 14, we will host a St. Patrick's Day event to celebrate Irish culture. On March 28, we will show the movie On the Basis of Sex about Ruth Bader Ginsburg. We're going to have a discussion on the obstacles women face, such as equal rights and how we can address those issues. Also, we are recruiting students for the spring 2019 elections. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Chancellor's Office, Peralta family, and community members. My name's Yamiche Johnson. I'm the Associated Students of Merritt College president for the 2018-19 year. It's nice to see you all again. I hope you guys are doing well and you're feeling great. First thing I want to talk to you about is actually emergency lights at the campuses and the colleges. Community colleges have an issue of safety, and we all know that we, they do. For a while, our emergency lights at our campus were out and they didn't work. Our college president advocated as hard as she could to get those lights replaced two and a half years ago. Now that they're finally up, Merritt only has about three of them. One placed in the P Building, one placed in the parking lot that isn't on yet, and the last one, I'm not sure where it's placed at, but I don't think it's on either. Some stats that I want to bring up to you guys is that as a community college, you have a thirty percent chance of being attacked on campus, and when your college is isolated, like Merritt College is, there is a fifteen percent chance increase at night. There, most of our students at night are, tend to be women. There are some men as well, but the concern is if someone's coming out of class at nine o'clock, nine fifty, to be realistic, from the A Building, and they get attacked, they have to run all the way to the P Building, which is the closest, closest one to them, or they can try and get to the parking B lot, which is also very far. That's, they're both about a half a mile run. I ran it myself, well, I tried to run it myself, to see how far it was, and it's pretty far. So ASMC is just asking, if possible, as soon as possible, at the earliest convenience, to resolve the issue of this and get more lights onto the campus as soon as possible. We understand that all the campuses need equality and all need the lights, but I would like for Merritt to be the one to have the most, just because of the isolation issue that we have. Sometimes cell service doesn't work up there. It's hard for people who especially have Verizon to be up there because they don't have a cell tower up there, and most phone companies outside of that don't have cell towers either. The only two that we have is Sprint and AT&amp;T, and so a lot of our services get cut off, and it's hard to contact people. So just wanted to put that out there and hope that something happens with these parking lots and inside of the campus as well, because the campus is really big. So the parking lot isn't the only place that we want these lights to be put in. Moving on to brighter news, we finally picked off the homeless kits. I brought one to show you guys. This one is all the shampoo, lotions, and things like that. There's another bag that has toothbrushes and night kits and things like that. So again, if you guys have anything, please come and bring it to us. We want to make sure that we get that out to our students as soon as possible. We've already given them out to five earlier today, and I'm hoping to give it out to more as the year goes by and as next year comes, and collect more as soon as possible so we can keep it in a pantry. And lastly, we wanted to take some time to say thank you to the Chancellor. So Chancellor, ASMC wants to make sure that you know from us that we appreciate you for everything you've done for us. The most, you are the most compassionate, caring, hardworking, and loving Chancellor that we've actually been able to see. You were always here for us, and you even listened to a few of us that were acting crazy, and will come talking to you, talking about Chancellor. We always do, always. That's like the thing. So I'm happy to present to you an ASMC appreciation, and I'm sad to see you go. We all sad to see you go, but we hope you have like the best retirement ever. You know, come visit us anytime. You're welcome, anytime. And with that, that's the end of the report. ASMC, again, we hope that you guys do the lights. That's like the really biggest issue that we're trying to push. I will come back with it again next time to let you guys know an update, but thank you. Have a good board meeting.
Thank you for that. We will move now to 2.8, Peralta Classified Senate Report.
Good evening. The Peralta Classified Senate held its first meeting of the spring semester last Thursday, February 21. The Constitution and Bylaws Committee gave its second and final report on the revisions it made to the PCS Constitution and Bylaws. Input was received from the senators. The revised PCS Constitution and Bylaws document was given to the senators for their review, with the intention of the document being ratified in the March meeting. In addition, interim PCS officers, with the exception of the secretary position, were elected at the meeting. The PCS president is Glenn Pace. The vice president is myself. The treasurer is Jennifer Lanahan, and the parliamentarian is Roberto Gonzalez. The next PCS meeting will be Thursday, March 21. We have a campus report from the Merritt College Classified Senate. On Thursday, February 14, four senators attended the ACCJC workshop held at the Hilton in Oakland. They were informed about how to prepare for the institutional self-evaluation report, which is due in January 2020. The Senate will complete their classified prioritizations after staffing information is extracted from the program reviews. If needed, the Merritt College Classified Senate will hold a special meeting to complete this process. Also, six Merritt College Classified Senators expressed an interest in attending the Classified Leadership Institute Conference being held June 13 through the 15 in Tahoe City. Senators were informed that usage of the professional development funds were placed on hold. The Merritt College Classified Senate president will seek advice from the college president and/or director of business services regarding assistance with funding classified professional development. That is the end of the campus reports. Thank you very much for your attention and your continued support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you. We will move to 2.9, District Academic Support. I'm sorry, Report.
Good evening, President Bonilla, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Legere, presidents, vice chancellors, and guests. I'm happy to report that the faculty have been busy teaching in their sixth week of the semester, and I could say personally, I love my engagement and interaction with my students. I really love to teach. I also want to share with you all that there has been lots of work being done in areas that faculty are involved in. I want to speak to a couple of areas that the faculty have been involved in, namely, the faculty within English, Math, and ESL, who have been meeting and working together to meet the requirements of AB 705. They have created curriculum, added help with their English 1 and their Statistics 13 classes and other classes to ensure that all students taking those classes will have the support needed to succeed. The colleges have already determined the number of, the number of types of courses they will be offering in the fall of 2019. The faculty is a credit to Peralta and their professions in doing this work as quickly as they have. I want to express the district academic senate's thanks for the tremendous work they have done and will continue to do. I also want to take this time to express my thanks to administrators, classified, and faculty who have stood up and have engaged in the work on the five-year fiscal plan and the work we are doing to submit to ACCJC and May. This is a fast-paced effort that requires collective we to participate and to work together. By no means is this easy or even comfortable for all of us on PGC and PBC and the two subcommittees of Finance and Enrollment. Given the difficulties in getting majority agreements, let alone consensus, we're going to need trust and goodwill for us to work together and to create a five-year fiscal plan that we agree to. Cuts are never easy. Once these committees even come up with the percentage cuts for the colleges and districts over a period of years, it is the college and the district's shared governance and operational processes that will determine how these cuts impact on the people and the work they do. Finally, I'd like to take a brief moment to remind the board, the chancellor, the public, what process DAS has been involved in since August. DAS posed the question back in August whether DAS should have a vote of no confidence for the chancellor and the board. It translated to whether there was a, was there confidence and confidence and no confidence in the Board of Trustees. Later, as we embarked on answering these questions, we added whether or not the chancellor or Board of Trustees should be censured. Throughout the fall, we developed a white paper, an executive summary graph, to provide faculty of what DAS has been concerned with over the past few years. Academic senates at the colleges also held forums, and their senates also discussed these issues that were framed from this white paper. This semester, DAS called for a vote and set the vote for March 5, 2019. DAS indicated that before the vote, that if the individual college senates wanted to do resolutions or motions on this issue, they should do so before the March 5 vote. We currently also have pledged to have a faculty survey go out to all faculty, which we are currently in the middle we are currently in the middle of completing. To date, Laney College faculty and BCC Academic Senate voted in a resolution for no confidence vote on the chancellor. Neither elected to do anything on the Board of Trustees. Merritt Academic Senate last week voted a motion to support DAS to have the vote on March fifth. COA Academic Senate has discussed the issue, but as of yet have not done either. I say all of this to communicate that DAS takes its ten plus one responsibility seriously. We do not on a whim call for a vote. We believe we have done it deliberatively and carefully. DAS considers the fiscal crisis we are currently in, uh, has been a rash of decisions or lack of decisions by the administration and board that has led us to this point. We believe that accountability is important in any assessment. Our role to collegially provide advice to the chancellor and board, uh, because we are, uh, a relied upon district, uh, within our bug, uh, uh, board policies and APs, that means that when DAS and the college senate speak, the board and chancellor should listen and agree, except in extenuating circumstances. I hope and encourage this board and the incoming interim chancellor to collegially consult with the academic senate and to listen to us, unless there are extenuating circumstances, then respond in writing why you are not agreeing with our recommendations. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam Vice President, do we have, um, public communication?
Yes, we do. Can we please see Richard Tholey? Is he here? And Kimberly King and Chris Widenbach?
I wanted to show my colors tonight for our local. So I'm, in case you have forgotten, my name is Richard Tholey, SEIU ten twenty-one chapter president. Um, good to see you again. Um, the items I want to speak out on today, um, in particular are items five point one, um, which is the ICC contract for a Laney College website, I guess, um, someone to provide technical and design expertise. Before I continue, I want to read part of our contract, which is a contract that doesn't belong only to SEIU, but it's a contract between the district and SEIU. The district will not contract that work if to do so would cause a displacement of bargaining unit personnel, as that term is defined in the definition section of this contract. The district shall make every effort to ensure that bargaining unit work is performed by bargaining unit members. And the Laney, well, any web content developer, um, which I believe matches with what, uh, is needed, which is, uh, being requested, I guess, by the campus, um, falls under our bargaining unit. And so I've provided the board, um, with a web content developer, uh, job description. And according to that and the pay scale, if you start that staff out on the highest step, step five, they would be making around the same amount as this contracted person has been making with their time with Peralta. Seventy-two thousand five hundred, they've already, um, gained a contract, a total amount. And that's around the same as we would have with a full-time web content developer, um, minus the benefits. So I propose that a web, web content developer be hired maybe at the district level, and perhaps, um, those services then can be shared with the campuses or something. But this, you know, I, I do want to state, and I contend that this is, um, a, a classified position that falls within our bargaining unit, so I'd like you to reconsider approving this, uh, approving this contract. The other item I want to briefly touch on is item seven point four. And I only want to touch base on, you know, in reading this, it just kind of seems that, you know, it's, it, it looks like it's, um, the campus is requesting a, it looks like a design, um, for emergency phones. I'm not necessarily against this, but I would also propose that it be done district-wide. If we're going to hire someone at one campus to do a project, I believe we need to start looking forward and doing the same at the different campuses, if, if it's required. So I'd like to see some, some common services provided district-wide, as opposed to certain services provided at one campus, which is going to be different from another campus, which is going to be different from another campus. Um, so just for the record, I'm not against this, but I would like, at least, not with what I'm stating now, but I would like to see some kind of common goal in moving forward and establishing this or other designs or projects at the different campuses, so they kind of mesh. Thank you. Have a good evening.
Does someone leave their computer? Or is this, okay, sorry, sorry, it's coming. Hi, everyone, I'm Kimberly King, and I am a psychology faculty at Laney, and I'm also the program coordinator for the A-Moja program there. I'm the PFT diversity chair, and, uh, right now, on behalf of PFT, I would like to express to the board, uh, our sincere gratitude for hearing the faculty and community concerns about the chancellor. Uh, we would like to express our encouragement to the board to ensure the following things. That, uh, in the future, the Peralta chancellor is always held accountable, no matter who that chancellor might be. That the district engage in negotiations in a fair and transparent and productive manner. We are a strong and united union of part-time and full-time faculty. We fight for all of our faculty, and it's not proper for the chancellor or anyone to attempt to divide our union, especially while we're in negotiations. We ask you to ensure that shared governance be prioritized. Uh, shared governance is a part of the community college system, as you all know. This isn't a private business. This is a public college, and transparency and shared governance, which means that administrative decisions should be made with the participation and consultation of the official leadership bodies of our students, our faculty, and classified staff. We also ask, uh, urge you to ensure that public funds are spent for the public good, and that the public is listened to when they raise questions and concerns. Again, we urge you to run Peralta as the public resource that it is, and not as a private business. Most importantly, we urge you to guarantee that students are truly seen as the priority. Student education and development are the center of our work. It's the only reason we exist. Our diverse student body, which includes many homeless students, uh, such as, uh, Keith was at one time. These are students who are dedicated to getting an education in extremely difficult circumstances. And I hope that student, faculty, staff, and the board may be able to work together to solve the problem of student housing insecurity and other important challenges that interfere with student success. Finally, we want, PFT wants to express our strong support to the OEA teacher's strike. They are striking for smaller class sizes, more student support services, such as nurses and cl- counselors, and for a living wage. The Oakland teachers are fighting for their students and themselves, and PFT has been on the picket line, supporting them every day. And we encourage you all to, um, join us and support the teachers who are fighting for their students. Cause united, together, we can have the quality public education that Oakland students deserve and that East Bay students deserve, from kindergarten through the community colleges. So thank you.
Hello, y'all. I'm Chris Widenbach, uh, on the English faculty at Laney College. I kind of want to give you something that I think doesn't happen enough, um, which is just a view. So these are not only my personal views, but I'm trying to share what I see as the view from people on the ground. People that, people who work at Laney, uh, students who are studying at Laney, uh, the families who support those students, and the families who support some of us workers Collectively, people who pay attention, at least a little bit, which is outside of what they usually think of as their jobs, um, they appreciate some of the recent shifts in direction that we've seen from the board. We truly appreciate it. We appreciate the collaboration-friendly leadership exhibited by, uh, several district leaders, such as Finance VC Johnson and Academic Affairs VC Brown. Donald mentioned the work around AB seven oh five, and, uh, Dr. Brown has been very, a, a, a very good, strong, listening leader, uh, in those efforts to prepare for this new era. It is, as an English teacher, I know, this is a big change that's coming. There's also wide general support for, uh, what I, a, a, a group of people who I don't think somehow don't get talked about enough, and that is our college presidents. People have a lot of confidence that we have really good leadership at the colleges. And at Laney, our leadership team is very strong in the academic, uh, sorry, in the, in the administrative levels. That has not always been the case, so that's something to celebrate. All these things are cause for faculty and classified professionals and students, um, to have a sense of optimism, um, and to feel a sense of efficacy, where engaging in shared governance, which is all of our charge, actually might get somewhere. It actually might not be a waste of time. And that's real. And that, again, is not, it's not my view. It is my view. I don't, sorry, I'm confusing you. It is my view, but it's a view that I'm trying to share from a multitude of people. Those who are actively engaged in shared governance want nothing but legitimacy. We're, we're not looking for, we're not looking to humiliate anyone, we're not looking to embarrass anybody. We're not looking to grandstand, we're not looking to like get any kind of personal gain at all. We want to, if we're teachers, we want to teach. We want to teach with good classroom conditions, working conditions, right? People who do their jo- they want, people just want to do their jobs at the colleges. They want to do them without interference. They want to do them in a system that is efficient enough to not feel like we're being used, or blocked, or ignored. That's all. That's all. That's all we have wanted, that's all we do want. And I, again, am speaking for a collective group of people, I promise you. Moving forward, we continue to want the same thing. Legitimacy, respectful collaboration that honors the shared governance structure. It exists for a reason. Those of us who participate in it want it to go somewhere. We don't want to waste our time, we don't want to have meetings just to have meetings. Um, we don't want to, we want to, don't want to do all these duties, uh, for any reason other than making progress. And when those bodies, uh, Donald mentioned the relied upon nature of our district, when those bodies make recommendations, when they raise concerns, all we're asking is, again, those concerns, those recommendations must be respected, they must be heard, they must be either followed or answered. And, um, I think it's really important that this, the underpinnings of a better, future Peralta colleges is being felt, is not being felt by the people who don't pay much attention. I want to tell you that, too. But the people who do pay attention and who do participate, we feel it, it's real, and again, and on a positive note, we appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now move to the chancellor's report.
Madam President, for my report, I'm asking President Gilkerson to give you an update on the fire watch, as well as the Laney pool. And then VC Brown will give you a brief, uh, progress report on, uh, our work toward the ACCJC, um, plan that we, uh, will submit, uh, to the commission.
Uh, thank you, Chancellor Logare.
Excuse me for, for one second, I'm sorry. Can you clarify that, so we have a fire watch report back from Laney? And the second part was an ACCJC?
Just an update on, uh, the work that's being done.
Just a verbal update. Thank you, thank you.
Uh, for clarification, my understanding was you wanted me to do the fire watch and the Laney pool? So I, okay, I just wanted to make sure that's.
Yeah, and VC Brown will do the ACCJC.
So, uh, for context, um, again, on January tenth and eleventh, Oakland Fire Department, um, came to do their fire life safety inspections of Laney College campus and found a host of deficiencies that date back, um, many years. All buildings had troubled with alarms, and, um, we were put on fire watch, which is consisted of checking every building checked every hour of every day. Um, since that time, we have remained on fire watch. The college continues to be on fire watch today, um, since the semester began at a cost of, uh, just under twelve K a week, um, and we will continue until the alarm panels alone are clear of trouble. So the cost from, um, January twenty-second so far to three, uh, March first will be sixty-three thousand, over sixty-three thousand dollars, just on the fire watch alone. Simplex Grinnell only started, uh, their repairs on the fire alarm panels today. We were told the estimate for these repairs is just over forty-three K. Um, this work has been funded, and they will continue to work on the campus repairs until they are complete. They will certify that each panel, once prepared, and that information will be provided to the fire department, who will then have to come out and expect the work that Simplex Grinnell has done, and release each building one by one from fire watch. It's my great hope that we're off fire watch by the end of the week. However, Simplex, um, is to return next week if repairs are not complete. Um, the alarm panels were one of the most critical deficiencies cited by the fire department. While we will be removed from fire watch once those repairs are complete, there are several other important deficiencies that will need to be addressed in very short order, such as the alarm panel communication to the central dispatch, replacement of our fire hoses, and follow-up inspection reports, such as the annual sprinkler inspection report, dry stand pipe certification, generating testing records, emergency light testing documentation. From the last reports, which were in April twenty seventeen, these are deficiencies and repairs needed in most of these areas.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stop?
Should, we should probably stop here.
Sorry.
Um, because there could be questions, and so I just want to give, yes, trustee Brown.
So I'm a little, a bit confused regarding the background under, underlying the. The Simplex Grinnell system was part of our, um, or I should say, the life safety system was part of our facilities master plan. And the, we, as I recall, we did a job-on-call contract for the fire life safety system, and I guess through the chancellor, um, VC Ikaro can correct me, but we did that a few years ago for the specific purpose of knowing that we needed to have, uh, price quotes and unit, unit prices on, that were set for a specific period of time, um, so that we can do the type of repairs that were necessary to keep the fire life safety op, a system operable. Fire, fire watches are not uncommon in educational institutions when there is a lapse with regard to some sort of, um, ability to get the vendor out to fix the system. to some sort of ability to get the vendor out to fix the system, but I had recalled that we addressed that within the last five years, which means that the contract, the job-on-call contract should still be operative. So I'm wondering why we didn't have the ability to call out Simplex under the existing contract with the specific unit prices quoted, because that was part of our facilities master plan.
Yeah, last year, the district, the Department of General Services asked the board to renew the contract for Johnson Control, which now owns Simplex Grinnell, and that contract was about $383,000. But in order for that, that contract would go until 2021. But what had, what happened between the Department of General Services and the contractor was that that contract was not funded. The, the, the director for maintenance and operation that handled the transaction was looking for funding to be able to fund that so that a purchase order could be generated for the vendor in order to start work. And the way I got wind of this was that we were in a meeting of District-wide Facility Committee, when one of the engineer, Jason Bosby, indicated that, that the Fire Watch in the situation in their campus was an issue. It was then I came to the chancellor and said, "Look, we're gonna have to do this, otherwise there's gonna be trouble down the line." So they, then it was funded at that time. This was back in December. But the vendor indicated that because they had already drawn up their schedule for January, they could not accommodate the district. So they had the district work to be done in February. But unfortunately for the district, the Oakland Fire Marshals sent 12 individuals by January at night and 10 that the president indicated to come and do audit, investigation. So that is, that was the analysis of that. But now, they do have a contract for all the colleges, not just Laney, to be able to do work that needs to be done, they are doing repairs that needs to be done. But the, the other part of this, which is gonna be coming back to the board, is that the vendor is telling me that communication between this fire alarm and the district, the district sheriff department is intermittent, it's not, it's not regular, it's not constant.
Dr. Ikaro?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
For your response.
All right.
I'm going to move to, I, I, I'm sorry, trustee Brown, did, did you get your question answered?
The answer is yes. I, I did. The, the, the disquiet of the answer is what I'm wrestling with.
For the chair.
Thank you. I, I have one other person in the queue, and then Dr. Withrow, so I have Dr., trustee Napolea Bella Reese, and then trustee Withrow.
So I'm gonna further that disquiet, because to clarify, you had just said that last year there was a contract that did not get approved or did not get funded that was gonna expire 2021. Is that correct?
Yes.
What you just said, okay. So when this happened, I went back to the board docs, and I looked at all of our Simplex, Grinnell, and Johnson contracts.
Yes.
All of them. And I know there's some for the elevators, and there's also some for the fire systems.
Yes.
So I separated those two as much as possible.
Yes.
On June 27, there was a contract for $198,321.56 that was approved by the board, and then it was approved by the chancellor on June 8.
Yes.
And the termination date for that particular contract is June 30 of 2019. We're still in 2019, and we've paid 63K, I believe, or we've paid for them to fix what should still be covered within a contract that doesn't terminate until June, that we did fund, according to my paperwork here. So I am befuddled.
The...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure you should answer that right now.
I don't think...
Yeah. I would like to hold that thought. Thank you, trustee Nabella, Napolea Bella Reese, and trustee Withrow. We do, but we, we just have probably some follow-up.
Well, I'd, I'd like to segue from what the conversation has been in the, in the briefings, and I guess what I don't understand is that there was a project order, and you said it was not funded. You said the project order was not funded. Is that right?
It was not funded at the time staff requested.
Does that mean that the board, the communications to your unit was that the board didn't approve it?
No, that is not the issue.
How does, how does something get not funded?
Okay. Usually, before an item comes to the board, the, the amount, the budget for that item
Right.
is determined.
Right.
And then the board approves the item. But in this case, that was not the situation. The, the funding to be able to pay and set up a purchase order for the vendor was not there, even though the board has approved the item.
Shouldn't that have set off a red light to somebody? Shouldn't that have set off a red light? We have a, a, a safety issue, and so there's a conflict of interpretation or communication or whatever, but shouldn't that have set off a red light to the, somewhere in the organization that we got a problem and we need you to address it in a very rapid fashion?
Yes, the answer to your question is correct. Yes, this should have set up some, something light to somebody in the organization, but the, the, the need, as I do indicate here from time to time, of facilities, to be able to get sufficient funding to get this done, has been problematic, given the budget constraint that we operate under.
I have, thank you.
For the chair, I'd like to pursue that later at a different environmental set.
Okay, and then I have student trustee Jordan, and then trustee Weinstein.
Okay. Good evening. So I have a question, just for clarification, because I was a student during this time period, and so I remember that you were the person in charge for a series of duties, but then that was given to another person, and then it was given back to you. And so my question for clarification is, who initially is responsible and dropped the ball, and can we go from there forward so that we can just fix what's going on right now? Because I remember us having all of these meetings and whatnot, so if we could just be direct for, you know, and who, who's responsible, so that we can just go from there and fix it, instead of all of this?
Okay. I will send the board communication in writing, and I'm not gonna be naming names as to who dropped the ball here.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Weinstein.
Thank you. Do we have any kind of a, a book or something that shows when there is an inspection at each of the colleges in terms of fire or any safety issues, is there? Like, could we have looked at that book, or somebody could have looked at...
Schedule maintenance.
Said, schedule maintenance? That would have said, we're missing that inspection?
We have a log in each college with the fire panel.
Mm-hmm.
That Simplex Grinnell does log activities on at the colleges, and we know when these contracts are on, and every year we have lists of what you call scheduled maintenance that needs to be done for safety and security district-wide. Yeah, so we do have that. But in this case, we, we knew, a contract was sent to the board, it was approved, and the issue here was that it was not funded in a timely manner, so that a purchase order can be generated for the vendor. So that is the matter here.
So I have kind of a follow-up question to trustee Napolea Bella Reese. If we have an existing contract in place, it's current, it's an active contract with dollars assigned to it, how is it that we have now another contract for $63,000 on top of an existing contract for $183,000? So chancellor, can you...
Yeah, madam president, without seeing the specifics, it's really hard to answer that, because it depends on the scope of work.
And, and that, and that's definitely the question, so is this, is this a different scope of work?
I'm not looking at, I don't have that to, to really verify, but that's something we can look at and staff can report back on March 12th, or we can send written communication on that.
Are there any further questions? Okay. President Gilkerson, can you proceed with your, oh, I'm sorry.
Just gonna ask one question. So, and this is just based on experience in dealing with construction matters, but by supposition, and I suppose I'm asking if it's the will of the board, when we get the analysis, it's my understanding that the likelihood that there would be an additional contract amount would be because the contract that we issued in the first place, the proposal for the job-on-call contract had specific unit pricing, and it had specific things that had to be done in, as part of scheduled maintenance, to make sure that we didn't get into a position where we could not hold them to the unit pricing because we couldn't issue the POs in time. So I'm, I'm supposing that it's likely that we lost the unit pricing that we had secured under the contract. And if that's the case, at least it would be instructive in terms of, of prophylactic foresight to make sure that the matters that the board has addressed through approving the contract are funded so that we can avoid the type of result that we had foresaw when we sought the unit pricing under the contract that would take care of the scheduled maintenance.
Thank you for that, trustee Brown.
For the chair, could I ask another quick question?
Yes, please, trustee, trustee Withrow.
I'm gonna show my naivety here of not understanding the operation, but is all of this digitized, or are we talking paper?
Is it digitized?
It is digitized.
Every building has a panel, like a alarm panel, that has signals?
No, 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 no. I, I, I'm sorry, I didn't make myself clear.
Okay.
The, the digitization, is that the management process showing we have an issue, and we've got this outstanding, and we've got a problem? Is that all on the computerization? Or are we talking paper? Paper going to Judy, John, Joe, and Jim?
It's both in the paper, and it's also in the computer, like spreadsheet, like, like spreadsheet, like an Excel spreadsheet, or communication in the computer is there, if that is what you're alluding to. But also, the actual equipment itself is electronic and has information that staff manages, yes.
Okay, thank you.
President Gilkerson.
So the chancellor's asked me to give a little bit of an update on the Laney pools, given comments recently. So there have been ongoing issues at the Laney pool for a number of years due to lack of maintenance and upkeep. And in May of 2017, conversations began about doing major project repairs at the Laney pool. In October 2017, there were some ongoing issues that we had, and in December 2017, we started major repairs, which included a new heater, a new chlorinator, new controllers, and lateral repairs to the pool. So major infrastructure upgrades that were to happen. We had, however, during that time period, four project managers who were overseeing the project and payment and problems throughout the time period. In November, after reopening the pool, we did have some issues with chemistry and issues of sand collection that are happening, and our engineer, who is specializes in the pool, had then subsequently not cleaned the pools because we didn't want to damage the new equipment that we had put in, and so that we were experiencing a number of different issues. And so in December, we began to experience more problems with the competition pool and the training pool. We have two pools there, competition and training. So in December, we had a heater problem that didn't, that did not reset after a local power outage that we had in Oakland, and heat was restored, but there was no subsequent shutdowns due to the heat. We had received issues with one of our contractors receiving confirmation of payment for the laterals, and by the time we were able to get those payments resolved, by January, we were in a space where they were having to order the parts that took, you know, eight weeks to get the parts that we could do. And until that time, our engineers at the district indicated that they might be able to balance the chemistry, but we moved forward with actually renting the Mills College pool for our Laney College teams to practice at, so as to try to not, as much as possible, disrupt their training and practices. On January 10th, we were advised that both pools would be closed through January 15th, and unfortunately, the, again, the parts did not come in until, and repairs did not start until the end of January. And so we tentatively planned to open the pool in February, but due to chemistry issues in the competition pool, the chlorine was still too high, we were advised that the pool would reopen on February 4th. As of February 4th, both pools have reopened. We actually have gone out to get a pool service contractor to help us support the ongoing maintenance of the pools in collaboration with the engineers, and they had helped us assess our pools and provided support for the one-time cleaning we needed, as well as to contract for helping us with issues on how we were measuring the chlorine and the pH levels in the pool, and providing ongoing emergency support if the pools go down. They came out and calibrated all the pools between February 19th and 21st, and have been working on training the lifeguards on protocols, and will be coming back again to train staff and the lifeguards again. The pool chemistry, again, has tested within limits as of yesterday and today and earlier this week. We are trying to finish the pool project, so one of the things is we have this amazing system that's gonna be sending digital alerts and things, but the whole thing has not been integrated yet from when we started to do the work. And so one of the issues is that the CO2 tank, the new CO2 tank, is too far away from where it needs to go, so we need to get, get that resituated so that the whole, everything can be reconnected and configured, and we expect, hopefully, to have an answer about when that can happen at the 1st of March. I recognized in through this process that while we were sending regular communications to coaches, faculty, and the cost center managers where there was problems with the pool, that our communication with the public and our communication with end-user pools, we use it for larger contracts out, for communities to use it, we have fee-based classes, our own student classes, and then our own teams, that we needed to do better than that. So two weekends ago, I worked with our director, Amy Marshall, to pull from our fee-based course system all names of end-users. We sent a detailed communication to them about our plan of action and what we've done. I've responded to every community member as well. We held two open forums this, 7:00 in the morning, Amy Marshall and I were on the pool deck to answer questions following the email, and then we did a subsequent one the last Friday at noon to talk to end-users of the pool, to talk to them about what we're doing and how we are trying to resolve and keep the pool open and safe and functioning for the community. And so we are going to be setting up a continual communication system and working on some implementation of things that they had hoped we'd do, but I think the new system, we hope, once it's all connected, will lead to more consistency of the pool facility.
Thank you. I would just like to state for the record that it is customary and routine for boards to receive regular communication on schedule of maintenance, schedule of pro- for boards to receive regular communication on schedule of maintenance, schedule of programs, progress made, where we have issues, what the red flags are. And that is something that this board has not received on a regular basis, especially for high-priority items such as these two. So this board, if I may speak on behalf of the board, will definitely be looking for regular reports on schedule of maintenance and progress of maintenance. And just for the record also, and I appreciate that we were able to at least accommodate some of our end-users at the Mills Pool, but do understand that that as a trustee, I actually received calls from irate Mills Pool users who were misplaced or out of their pool as a result of our own issues. So the ripple effect is just, it's overwhelming. And it just doesn't impact us here as a community, it impedes and infringes on others. So thank you for that update. I'd like to now move to our presentation, 3.1, PCCD facilities presentation, from student and faculty perspective. Jennifer Shinowski? Hello, Ms. Shinowski. Do you have another presenter with you? Do you have a student presenter or is just you?
No, I can explain my title. It's just me. So my presentation, though, is looking at the campuses. And I call it a student and faculty perspective because we work in these classrooms. And so this is what, these are the kinds of things that we see every single day. And we believe very strongly that the teacher working conditions are our students' learning conditions. And so that's why I've titled it this way. So I'm here today giving a presentation for the first time ever because, let's see if I can get into my slideshow here. Because I've shown a few of these pictures to several board members at different times, and people were always shocked. And I was surprised that trustees were surprised. So I decided to put together just a short presentation that shows you some highlights of the things that we experience on campus every day. I put out a call to the representatives of the PFT from all four colleges and asked them to send me things. And I also am including some pictures that I have taken just when I've been walking around on campuses. So these are not, this is not a comprehensive slideshow. There are many things that I didn't include here. Thanks to President Gilkerson, I don't have to talk about the fire alarms today. The Laney library elevator that's been out for years. The, you know, ADA compliance issues all around the district. There are plenty of things I could bring up that are not included today. So be aware, this is not comprehensive, it's just a little taste. I'm happy to give you more. The other reason I think that this presentation is really important today is that we're closing out our last bond. We are not a poor district that has no money to pay for the various things that we need. And we're getting ready to spend the money on a new bond that the taxpayers in our community so generously have provided. And so I think it's important that all of you see what we face every day and get a taste for why many of us are really angry about the conditions that we work in. So with that, I will, I will go ahead and start. So this is the College of Alameda Gymnasium. These are the steps in the gym. Notice that they don't have any markings on the steps. So people fall all the time, including people that work in the gymnasium, like part-time coaches that work there, because the steps are not clearly defined. And you can see that they're cracked and broken places, and so it's easy to trip. This is a little video. This is rain that's falling inside the gymnasium. So this is where students go to practice, inside, and that is rain falling in the gymnasium. Okay. Whoops. This is, these are pictures of the geography and geology rooms. You can see this map I've highlighted here is from the 50s. So students are learning geography, right, using a map that has, you know, USSR in it. You can see that the room is really crowded, right? There's no, whoops, sorry, there's inadequate storage, and so things are just piled in there. There are the rocks for the geology classes. This plastic, black plastic covering you can see there, I don't have my laser pointer. You can see there is covering up materials because of leaks, okay? Leaking roof. These are the bathrooms, some of the bathrooms at COA, I think I have more bathrooms coming up. You can see broken doors, they're filthy. Here are some more pictures, this is, I took these, so I know these are on the third floor at COA. The note, the torn paper that says our toilets are sensitive, so please use a small amount of tissue, right? They're constantly clogged. There, there is a plunger there, thankfully, so the students that are using that bathroom that's right next to their classrooms can unclog their own toilets. You can see in the picture on the right just how dirty, the floor is dirty, the wall is dirty. I mean, that's where you're going to wash your hands, the sinks are dirty. Here is just some examples of some leaks that are happening at COA and the way that faculty and students and staff deal with the leaks in their various rooms are to put trash cans in the middle of the floor. So those trash cans are there to hold the leaks. You can see in that middle picture, the leaks are coming actually through the lights and pooling in the light fixtures. And so many of the covers for the light fixtures on the right have been removed so that the water can actually escape that area. Here are some more scenes from COA. On the left, that's a drinking fountain, this is really typical of the drinking fountains throughout the district. You see these brand-new, beautiful drinking fountains that you put your water bottle in. They're covered in mildew and mold all around the district. You see in the middle picture, this is a, this is a classroom, these are where students go to learn. There's old chalkboards that, they remain really dirty because they're so old, so you can barely write on them even with chalk, you can't really see very well on them. No one actually cleans them as far as I know. I always have had to clean them myself if I use chalk. You can see the cables on the ground there, pooled up on the ground, right? That's an unfinished smart classroom upgrade. On the right, you see racks in the library, these have no earthquake preparation. So if there's an earthquake and somebody's standing by those racks, well, there will be problems. Here are some clever attempts at fixing some of the problems around COA. So on the left there, you see a vent, that's a heating vent, and someone has stuffed tissues into it because some of the pieces are missing. Stuff there to stop debris from coming through. And then, of course, we know about the emergency phones. This is the mold at College of Alameda on the left. And on the right, we thought that that was mold, but there's new information coming, and it may not be mold. It sure looks like black mold to me. These are faculty offices. The mold at COA, we filed a grievance on, it took 11 months, I believe, to finally finish that project. The mold at Merritt, we've just recently filed a grievance on that and have movement there. Let's move from COA to Laney. So Laney, these, most of these are pictures that I took one day, just like randomly walking through campus. So on the left, you'll see a map, right, that's the Laney College map. So that's how students orient themselves to the campus. I mean, it's gross. On the right, this is the entrance to the women's locker room at Laney College and Fitness Center. So you can see it's just really uninviting, it's dirty, it's dark, there's graffiti on the walls. These are the showers in the women's locker room. So there were actually people using these facilities. This is the facility that the water polo team, the swimmers, this is where they go to shower after class or after practice every single day. Here's the fitness center, so you'll see on the left, that's a line of treadmills. Every one of them has a sign on it, and the signs all say that the treadmills are broken and please use another machine. Right? So go down the line, and that's what students walk into. They're taking a fitness center class, this is a class that they are registered for, and nothing works. These are some pictures from the quad, so broken window boarded up with boards. I don't know how long it's been like that. Here are, on the right, you can see some students at the top sitting there studying. So students often are going to be sitting around on the staircases on nice days, studying. And the planter boxes have weeds and garbage throughout. These are the crash pads at the gym, so you can see that they're, this is at Laney. You can see that they're falling down and missing in places. So they're supposed to be padding, they're supposed to be padding all the way across, right, for students that, I guess, overshoot, I'm no coach. Is that right? They go too fast, can't stop. But if that poor student is over here, they're going to hit concrete. This is also in the gym at the top of the stairs. So the door is broken, so instead of fixing the door, somebody has tied the door closed with rope. And that's a walkway actually through there, so getting through there is a little bit difficult. Here are some drinking fountains, this is what I was talking about, about, this is a brand-new drinking fountain. This is a year or two old, but, I mean, I wouldn't drink out of that. Many of the drinking fountains, I had tons of pictures of drinking fountains, but I won't, I decided to spare you. Many of them look like this, they've got this, you know, rip hair with this gray putty on them. Many of them are visibly just so filthy, you wouldn't, you wouldn't ask your pet to put their face in those drinking fountains. This is at an event at the forum just a couple of weeks ago. I noticed this caution tape was strung up along the back. There's caution tape all along the back row in the forum, and the reason it's there is that, whoops, there are these screws sticking out of the wall. And so somebody decided to warn people not to scratch their legs against those screws. You can see that the molding on the carpet is falling down, and also, I mean, it's, it's just dirty. For a long time, the doors at the forum were broken, and this is what they looked like, they had caution tape across them. This has been repaired now, this is a slightly older photo. There's a sign that says, "Do not use this door, please use the door on the upper level." Of course, that can be really problematic for any of our students with disabilities. The bathroom that was for women in the forum for months and months looked like that. The picture on the right, that's a leak with a hose going into the sink there and caution tape. Oh, that's it. So, yeah, these are just some snippets. I went into the academic affairs office, and I was like, wow, it looks so nice in here. They got a fresh coat of paint, and they got some new cubicles. Don't worry, I'm not going to get mad. And I did get mad, I was like, this is, this is not, how come they get this beautiful space with these beautiful walls and these beautiful cubicles, you know, and we have to go to work every day in rooms that look like this, and our students are learning in rooms that look like this? And then I realized that that was a horrible way to think, because really, the way it looks in academic affairs right now, I mean, it was just a freshening up. I mean, it was some paint and some new cubicles, and they haven't had any new things in years and years and years. And so instead of getting angry, I decided, this is what we all need, right? We all deserve to work in a space that at least is clean. It's not fancy in there, Siri probably won't mind if I invite you all to go look. It's not fancy, it's just clean, it's just the minimum of what we would expect. We shouldn't, the PFT shouldn't have to file grievances on things like mold in offices. We shouldn't have to grieve leaky roofs and doors and the smell of mildew in our classrooms in order to support our students. And most of the facility's issues that have really come up, we have to file a grievance before anything happens. It's a waste of time, it's a waste of energy, it's a waste of resources. And we just really hope that this board will figure out, I don't know why this is happening. I don't know why we have such disgusting facilities for our students to come to. But I do know that when we talk about a learning environment that our students want to come to, it is a huge issue that needs to be addressed before we start spending that bond money and we start making decisions that are shortsighted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation, and let's open it up for questions. I think I have, I have student trustee Jordan and then trustee Withrow.
So first, I want to say thank you for taking the time to make the slide and come down here and present. I just want to know if you talked to the student governments to get their input also? Because you're on point with your slideshow, and all of this is true. But if you talk with the student government or any students also, because what you just did was awesome, right? But I just also want to make sure that students were able to give their input as well.
Yeah, so for this particular presentation, I did not. I reached out specifically to our executive council of the PFT. But one of the things that the PFT is doing is we're gearing up to negotiate a new contract, and we have written a student survey. And so we would like to try and figure out ways that we can negotiate for things where students and faculty really overlap and can work together to improve things.
And also, I just wanted to offer up some resolutions to the slide that you put together. And it was really brave of you to put this slide together, so I just want to thank you again. In 2017, when I was in student government at Laney, we had a general meeting where several departments came together and we rated what needed to be fixed for the facility for, and I think other schools did this as well, from highest like 1 to 12, what needs to be taken care of the most. There is a lady that works at Laney, her name is Amy Marshall, and she does an amazing job at taking work orders in and then getting the work orders filled. And I know this firsthand because I was a student worker in her office. But what I did notice is that there were so many work orders coming in, it is impossible for that one person to fill all of these work orders that come in on a piece of paper that have to be typed into a computer and then go out and be serviced. So I would like to suggest, even though I'm not an expert, there is some money set aside to hire more staff to help Ms. Amy out, because she has been working tirelessly for the time that I have known her. And then also to hire more custodians for the campuses. So then that way, we're not just doing like reactionary work, we actually are able to have the things that we need. So if we could look back at the surveys that were already taken that says where all of these problems are, and was it, President, 2017 we did that? Because when you came on, you initiated a lot of stuff, like, we need to take care of this, this, and this. And so thank you also for that. I don't know what happened to it, but I just think that if we look at those things, that we might be able to make some progress. Thank you.
Trustee Withrow.
I guess I have a multitude of questions, but one of them is...
I guess I, I have a multitude of questions, but, um, one of them is, uh, do we use organic staff for our maintenance? Or do we use contractors? And to what degree do we have the 50% law that's encroaching on, uh, curing out administrative, uh, type of, uh, actions?
So trustee Withrow, you're directing your comment to...
Well, whoever can answer is basically the chancellor, but, uh, in this case, the, whether it's organic or contract, they come under, uh, Vice Chancellor Sadiq Akaro and, um, the 50% law comes under the, uh, Vice Chancellor Johnson.
Uh, for, for the, um, uh, for the staff, we, we do hire our own staff, uh, except for some repairs that, uh, our staff cannot undertake, uh, those we, we have contracts, uh, for. But, uh, otherwise, we have our own staff. Now, um, I think I, I shared with, uh, the board before that, uh, the level of staffing that we have and that is throughout, uh, the organization is pretty slim. And I think that, uh, more custodians and more repair staff, uh, and, and even as we look at, uh, the implementation of an $800 million dollar bond where we're going to increase, um, our footprint by a lot and, um, and also have, uh, new technology and, and all of that for our buildings, uh, we do need, uh, to have, uh, different, uh, staffing, uh, to be able to, to accommodate that. But, uh, in general, we, we do, um, hire staff to, uh, to take care of, uh, of our maintenance.
The chancellor, uh, again, uh, is the constraint on the number of organic staff that can take care of these things, uh, is that constraint because of the 50% law?
I, I would say no. Um, uh, uh, you know, it, the worst thing that we can do is, uh, start, um, saying, hey, since we're putting, uh, is to put instruction against, uh, operations and, and operations against instruction as far as the 50%. It, it's just that, as I've, uh, shared with, uh, with us all, um, from a cash perspective, uh, our funding is just not what it needs to be for an urban, uh, organization that we are. Uh, the 50% law, um, we, we do, we do the best we can with it, but when I, when I look at, uh, the level of, uh, uh, faculty staffing that we have, uh, we're not doing, I mean, too great in, uh, many areas either. So, so to me, it's really, uh, a need that we have to increase, uh, the numerator of, of, uh, of, of our fraction as opposed to, uh, the denominator. Uh, really increasing the number that we have as, uh, funding is what we need to, to pay a lot of attention to in any way, uh, and shape that, uh, that we can. But, um, I can, you know, have, uh, uh, the finance folks, uh, talk, talk about, you know, what, what they think about it too. But to me, in, in looking at, uh, our funding in general is not what, uh, it should be. Uh, we, um, you know, we, we can fight over, you know, what, uh, what we have. It's just not enough to take care of our business, period.
Well, you know, uh, uh, again, it's a, a lot of this, as you see things or function to your background, um, and I'm thinking back, um, in 1975, which is quite a few years ago, I was in charge of the electronic resupply of the Navy, had a good share of the Marine Corps. And, uh, we knew more about, we were in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania, okay? Uh, we knew more about a ship in the North China Seas than what we seem to know about what's going on here facility-wise. It's unbelievable, you know, and this isn't something that's started last year, the last couple of years or whatever. Uh, there's something in the culture that is deficient here. And, uh, quite frankly, it, I've walked around a number of areas. Um, it, it, it boggles my mind. It just absolutely boggles my mind, okay?
Trustee, let me, um, let me get, um, trustee, uh, Napolea Bella Reese Brown and then Weinstein.
So I recall, uh, a few years ago, maybe it was five years ago, I think it was actually my first year as a trustee, I read the PLA and talked to VC Akaro about the, um, construction program that we have. And there is a provision in the PLA that allows our students to work with the contractors that we bring on to do maintenance, um, as a, as a sort of an apprenticeship, um, so that we would have students that are training through our construction program, our carpeting program in particular, uh, work on the maintenance. And so I guess my question is, as we are discussing the PLA and redevelopment or renegotiation of the PLA, that is, uh, one of the premier programs that we have at Laney College and it allows us to address our own needs as a, as an institution, um, while we are developing our educational program for our students. I recall that as being a very positive part of the PLA and, uh, but it was one that was underdeveloped at the time and it's something that I think that we could, um, focus on expanding because we are trying to strengthen the construction program that we have. And then the second thing I would say is I do agree that there is, we have, are scrambling about with, with dwindling resources, yet there is still a, uh, large amount of people in our service area that have the ability to benefit from an education. And we do have to increase our community outreach because our enrollment is declining and our, um, apportionment is declining, yet the metrics of the funding formula, uh, uh, would match with the student population that is underserved and whose needs aren't being met. And so I would urge us to put our focus towards serving the members of our community that are out there that could benefit and even going out to the neighborhoods and doing somewhat like, um, President Burns is doing in, uh, Merritt College, because if we can meet our students where they are and provide the, um, even the non-credit education, it can be a, a bridge to the, um, to our, um, certificate programs that are on campus and that's still funded through apportionment. We could still meet our metrics, a number of the metrics. We, I, I would like to us to look above, raise our heads up from some of the, uh, the struggles that we're having and look to how we could address the dwindling resources overall. That seems, that is the, the drum I keep beating, the community engagement as a means of meeting our, um, mission and serving the communities that are underserved. We would meet, we would mutually benefit from that. And there are ways that we can mutually benefit as well through the PLA with regard to, um, our construction maintenance.
Thank you, trustee Napolea Bella Reese.
Thank you, Jennifer, for that. And that was really important. Um, not too long ago, maybe about two or three weeks ago, Dag brought us on a tour of Laney. And, um, it was interesting to hear him speak because he was disheartened. He had come to the dais quite a few times and he had fallen that, he had thought that, that many of his, um, urges had fallen on deaf ears. And I'm glad he didn't lose hope because he brought the three of us over there and it was absolutely deplorable. The filth, the, the degradation, the, um, the student center. I mean, there were so many, each room that he took us to, each niche, each cranny, it was, it was beyond, um, beyond words. And so I'd have to say, going back to what you were saying, Jennifer, as a faculty member, student success is tied to how our resources look, how our rooms look, how our colleges look. And if one can say that on some level, how our facilities look, um, makes a statement about how we value our students, we seem to be saying that we are not valuing our students. And I have always, always believed that you can tell a lot about a district or a college or an institution just by how the bathrooms look. And if I were a student, I wouldn't want to come here. And that's not, that's not okay. It's not okay. The second question that I have, um, maybe the other question that I have, would be to our facilities director, if I can, if I can ask the question to, actually, no, both facilities and our chancellor.
Through the chancellor, please.
Or our chancellor. Were these photos surprising? And how often have we visited these particular colleges? That's my first question. And my second question, which was actually, should have been asked first, was especially with Pacific Coast Train on our facilities agenda, um, as an item that we are to approve, we, and I searched back to see how many contracts we had with Pacific Coast Train, which takes care of our HVAC and a variety of different, um, uh, problems at our colleges. Our current amendment is for $56,000 to make this particular contract total $450,798. And I would say that if we have done a lot of business with them and this is how our facilities look, there are two, at least I see, two possible problems. Either they're not doing a good job or we are not doing a good job ensuring that they are doing a good job. And either of those parts of the same coin continue to be problematic. So, um, you don't need to answer the, the second question unless you want to, but I do hope that they were appalling to you as they are to the people that live in them, not live in them, but work in them every single day.
Trustee Weinstein.
Thank you, trustee, uh, Bella, Nabella Reese. Um, yeah, I think a few of us went on that tour with, um, Dag and we were astonished by what we were seeing. Uh, and thank you, um, Jennifer, for showing the pictures because you really want to see the pictures. They're very important visually for us to see it. You can talk about it, but when you see it, it's a different, it's a different thing. Um, you know, in, in the same way that I think about the fire issue and the pool issue, um, I, I feel as if, and it may be incorrect, that, that we're just not keeping up on things. And, um, I'd like to, uh, ask and suggest that we find a way to do it, um, in such a way so that the board knows that these, um, areas are actually being fixed and that we know what the process is that's going to, um, make, enable these, um, rooms to be fixed and, and everything else. It, there seems to be somehow a lack of, um, structure so that we can't quite put our finger on what's going wrong, but it seems like things are going wrong. Um, so I, I would like to ask if there is some way that we can have, um, updates about these, um, photos that we, that we saw and whether, um, we can find a way to get these fixed, um, and the other items that have been brought up by Dag and, and the other students who've, who have it. I'd like to ask us if there is some way for us to get, um, feedback in terms of, uh, when, when these things are going to be fixed. And I understand, these are old buildings. These are things that are going to happen all the time, but we still have a responsibility to the students here, um, as, as well as the students off campus. And, um, I, I'd like us to be able to find a way to include this in our agenda so that we know when these items are actually getting fixed.
I, I just want to add to, um, to trustee Weinstein, I think this goes back to the original question, uh, or the original statement for the record that I made, which is, the board itself is responsible for, um, developing a directive with the chancellor or settling on a directive with the chancellor to bring back what the board feels is, is responsive to any of the presentations or anything that is brought forward. So rather than just, um, us putting, uh, requests out because we don't know where the request is lying, it, this really is the responsibility of the board, um, to negotiate and to give direction directly to the chancellor on what the board expects, um, in terms of follow-up, um, feedback, outcomes, reports and surveys. I just want to make that clear for the trustees, that when we are asking, um, or, or sharing any statements right now, that that's exactly what they are. They are statements, but we as a board really take responsibility for, um, figuring out what is the responsible, um, uh, way that we receive this information. Um, but we do have another follow-up, uh, question from trustee Jordan and then it looks like trustee Handy after.
Thank you. So, um, my question is to the board that if we could please get the master facilities plan that was done, um, for Laney College and the other colleges, because the data is there on what needs to be fixed and, and maybe, um, another one may need to be done because it's been a couple of years, right? And then also if we can get an estimated time of, um, when those items can be fixed and then also the manpower that it is going to take to keep up with, um, the request in the future because just a handful of people can't do it. So that's just my question and request. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Handy.
I'm not surprised by any of the pictures. This is nothing new. This has been going on for a while. We are an urban campus. We have people coming in off the streets. We've got a lot going on. We've got a lot of people here, but what, what is consistent is we are still understaffed. We've been talking about this for 10 years. Um, the custodians, again, that's a, a union position. We've often been short and often we've had people who are no longer in their positions but not, um, uh, able to replace them. What we're talking about, we don't need to put Band-Aids on major surgery. We can run around here and we can patch this and we can spray a can here. This is an institutional and systemic issue that if we don't get to the reality of not enough employees, and as Dr. Akaro said at our last meeting, we're getting money for facilities. That's wonderful, but that money is not for staffing. So that's not going to change everything. It's not going to be the, um, magical one that we're looking for. We really have to look at, and, and it's going to take some real serious, serious, um, changes to say, we are going to fund these areas. I went to Laney College when we were just a portable over at the Harper Building. And, um, when I visited other colleges, I was always shocked at how beautiful they are. But that's all, there's also a reason for that because there's money. And we are an urban district and we don't have all of the funding. And some of the campuses we've visited in, in Vegas, they're all beautiful, but that's not going to change. So we really have to look at the bigger picture. How are we going to change this so that we can, so that our colleges can report the issues and that we actually have people there who can fix those issues? How, and that only way that's going to change is by putting the staffing there that needs to happen, the custodial staffing there. I think our students deserve to have the beauty and the wonder of all that other campuses have. And that's why I absolutely could not understand why anyone, anyone would object to us going out for the parcel tax and for, and for the bond measure. That would, would, that would change the infrastructure that has been here since I was a student at Laney. And that was before many of you guys sitting out here was even born. We have that money coming now, but that, again, it's not a magical fix. If we don't, all of us decide that we're going to change how we look at this and that we're going to change and have the staffing that we need in order to do these things, it's going to still be the same. We'll have new buildings that are going to be falling apart very quickly because you don't have maintenance to take care of them. So let's not talk about putting lipstick on a pig. Let's talk about a systemic change that is going to make a difference and so that our students get to walk into the beauty that other communities that have more money can afford their campuses. But we've got to make do with what we have, but we've got to figure out a better solution. And running around putting Band-Aids on it is not a solution. It's just putting a, a comma on a very, very major issue. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer, thank you for your report. Did you have a couple more comments?
I just wanted to echo a couple of statements. First of all, I think that that is very true. I, I want to commend our brothers and sisters in Local 39, who have done an amazing job at trying to keep the facilities clean and, and maintained as best they can. You know, Merritt built a new S building and didn't have any plan for custodial staff for that building. So I definitely think it's a problem. And I would say that in addition to what you're suggesting, the fact that we're spending $12,000 a week on, you know, hourly fire watch, you know, $62,000, you said, so far has been paid for just that? You know, not only are we talking about putting Band-Aids on things that are hemorrhaging, but we're also talking about very expensive Band-Aids on these things. The other thing I wanted to mention is I wanted to echo trustee Bonilla, your, your sentiments about having a plan, right? And getting maintenance updates as you go along. I've seen from a couple of the colleges, documents that the colleges have about deferred maintenance for things that are safety issues, that are highlighted in red, that are provided to them by the district, and year after year, these things are not getting fixed. And, and I've seen them, and we've asked for them, and we look at them, and, and often they form the basis of grievances, because they're safety issues. And, and they go unfixed until something happens. And then it's too late, and it's really costly. So I just want to echo both of those things, and say that those are really important pieces to really consider as we move forward.
Thank you for that.
Thank you so much.
We are going to move to our consent calendar, and I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved by trustee Withrow, second by trustee Weinstein. Any discussion? Nope. No discussion on consent, right? Okay. Roll call, please.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move into action, and let's go ahead and take our action from those that were polled. And so we'll start with 5.1. And I actually pulled 5.1, and for, for similar reasons. And so, again, looking at the work that is being done, I am going to just make a statement for the, for the record, that we need to be very cautious in our outside consultants to make sure that we are not in violation in, in bringing on work that is currently being done, especially under our current collective bargaining agreements. And if there, and trustee, well, I have trustee Brown.
Was there, there is, was there information that was shared with the board regarding the, the job description and the particular contract scope of work? I didn't receive anything.
That was shared with the board? No, I, no, I don't have anything to share, or know that it was shared.
Yeah, we have the scope of work, but we don't have the SEIU scope of work. We don't have the bargaining unit's scope of work. That's what I'm asking for clarification on. We have the contract scope of work.
Right.
Right. Okay. I, I, I had heard earlier that there was something sent to the board, and I was wondering if that was something that was shared with the entire board.
No. But through the chancellor, I think, would, would you like to acknowledge one of your presidents if they so choose to respond?
To you, anything you want to add?
Yes, just, thank you for the acknowledgement. For just a, a quick clarification, I apologize, the scope of work should have been a little bit more defined to clearly identify. But this contract is for very high-level development, web development. It is not content development at all. It is hard coding, doing PHP, SQL, parts to the website that actually we do not have the expertise in-house at Laney College to do. So we transformed our website to be on a platform that most of the students and folks, that we can update ourselves. So we are, content is being driven from within the college. But the issue is that things like the slider, I'll use an example, recently, it was not intuitive for students, or what I felt was ADA compliant for students with disabilities. So we had to have the contractor hard code down the menu, so it all lays out, so people can search the whole thing and not have to hover over. Those are things that were outside of the expertise of our PIO, who serves also as our webmaster. And so I just wanted to provide the clarification that it's not content web development. This contract seto, Conrad seto, does like the hard coding kind of work on the sliders and the things like that.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Seeing none, we should probably move to vote. Roll call.
Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
No.
Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
The next item, 7.4, motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Withrow, second. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second, and discussion. So I moved this one, 7.4, because this one's a little complicated, and I wanted to be able to have counsel, if we can, just give a really kind of concise, brief update on this, and... 7.4, yes. And so we're going to have counsel from Erica Kurls Bartley.
Hi, trustees. This agenda item, we've coordinated with Department of General Services and Dr. Caro to get clarity for you. The, it's, it's actually providing a security design for the blue phones for the College of Alameda. The service was previously provided for Lady Anne Merritt, and then the work was stopped until they had additional funds. And so it's now just covering its design, and then they'll bring in another party who will actually do the implementation.
Okay. Are there any questions? Doctor, trustee Brown?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I recall, okay. So this goes back about three years, when we were talking about the blue phones, and we were talking about an overall comprehensive design, and we were talking about the, the issue with regard to data that is going over the voiceover IP, not going back to the sheriff's office, and then, and we were talking about how to address that. These are all parts of the same whole, and I appreciate the fact that when you see them separately, the context in which these are being brought forth is, has become sort of a long history. But this is part of why we had the Security and Facilities Committee, and these are things we've been working on for, I remember the last three years, it's been part of the IT plan, it's been part of the facilities master plan, and it's been specifically something that we've been working towards. It's part of what our student leader had mentioned with regard to Merritt College, that's part of the blue phones. So this is something that we have been, that's been brought back, and that we've been incrementally addressing because of, in part, the funding issue, but it also took a year and a half for the planning, as I recall, because of the complexity of the, the overall project, and that's not wanting to piecemeal it. So I think what I would suggest is trustee Jordan has repeatedly said we need to go back to our facilities master plan, so we see the big picture. This is part of that big picture that we've been working on for the past three years. So I appreciate the fact that it may be new to some people, but this does have a history that goes back to an effort to, to resolve this issue. And I think we have to appreciate that things, particularly that require design in facilities and, and information technology, requires design that can't, that's not going to be interrupted, that's not going to be hacked, and that projects forward the, the medium in which the communication is delivered. So all that to say, we need to look at the big picture, and possibly a little historical context might address some of these issues before it gets to the board level, but this is a, this is a three-year-old project in its implementation, and five years in its planning.
Thank you trustee Brown. If there are no further questions, we'll go ahead and, oh. Trustee Jordan?
I have a question. I have a question.
Trustee Reese?
I do have a question.
Okay.
This is going to be, and I don't know if you're going to be able to answer this, Erica, but this is going to be a bit naive. I'm not, I'm not sure who to give the question to. So I understand that it is, it's been there for three years and five years in the planning, but I think what's speaking to me is what I heard today in terms of the phones not working. And the design, the idea, I'm on board, but they're not working. I'm hearing that from the Merritt perspective. I, I think I've also talked to a few individuals at Laney that have said that there are many phones, but they're not working. So we're proving this, and we're carrying it forward, but we're not dealing with the issue as to why it's not working.
But chancellor Caro will answer. Yeah, the, the board approved contract for Oho Technology to build new phones, emergency phones for Laney College and Merritt College. That construction is in progress. About seven phones are working right now at Laney College, if you saw, if you go through the parking lot, and by this time next week, the remaining seven will be operational.
By, by this time, I'm sorry, by this time when?
Next week.
By this time next week?
Yes.
All of the phones at Laney will be operational?
At Laney will be operational. There are about 14 new phones, and then there are about six existing phones that are good. At Merritt College, construction is in progress. So they are going to be getting additional 10 new phones at the college. And, and so that is the progress. The work has been contracted out already, and the vendor is doing its work. But this, this item here is to do similar design for College of Alameda, so that we can contract out their own project to be done, too. And, and the phones at College of Alameda, the old phones have been removed, so they are not there anymore. So we're expecting to, to replace those with new ones.
At our next board meeting, could you confirm that at Laney, the phones are actually working?
Sure.
That would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
If there are no other questions, we can do roll call on 7.4.
Madam President, before we do the roll call for 7.4, I'm looking at my notes, and we did not actually have a formal motion and second for the...
5.1?
Correct.
Okay. So we took a vote on 5.1, but we need a first and a, a motion and a second.
Moved.
So moved by trustee Withrow.
Second.
Second by trustee Brown. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Student trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
And trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
And now we're looking at 4.3. 4.3 is the CBT contract, and it was pulled by trustee Nikki Gonzalez-Win, who unfortunately is not here. So I don't know. We have a move, and we have a motion to approve. We have a second from, from trustee Brown. Discussion? Trustee Brown?
I would just say that there, there is a lot of money, but there's a lot at stake in terms of how to address the fiscal issues of the district. I continuously say that predominant among the issues is that we have an excellent institution that's, that's underutilized by our community. And by that, I mean, there, the frustration and the dissatisfaction that I hear expressed has a lot to do with the fact that the people that need the education that's provided here are not here. We're not reaching them. And part of what the Collaborative Brain Trust will do is help us find a bridge to our community. We're in a silo, and we echo our own voices, which expresses our frustration and our brilliance, but it does not help address the declining enrollment. That is our fundamental issue, and there are ways to address declining enrollment, which are, again, I'll say, contract ed, meeting the community where they are. When people are enrolled and they have six credits, they are eligible for transportation, they're able to get, to become college-ready, they're, we meet the metrics of the AB 540 for, for our immigrant population, for our Board of Governors-funded population under poverty, the poverty metrics, and people underrepresented at higher ed. We have to be outward. We are, we've become very insular, and we keep saying the same things, but we're not changing our reality, in that we are not getting out to the community and serving the community where they are, which will address the underfunding, the lack of resources, and we won't be in this swirl. So what Collaborative Brain Trust is saying is we need to raise our head up and look out towards our community, and engage with our community. And there will be more money then. I believe that we could add at least 500 students a semester if we engage our community, and that will take a lot of the pressure off of the employees that are here, that are dealing with dwindling resources and underfunding of the operations to run this institution. So yes, it's a lot of money, but if we do not invest in a plan towards our future, we will continue to be fighting over dwindling resources. Our community will not be served, and that is a lose-lose situation. So whatever process we can use to engage and have conversations about how to be nimble enough to improve the manner in which we serve our community, I think is useful, because it will be one that engages the brilliant minds here on this campus, and gets them engaged with the brilliant minds that are waiting for the education in their neighborhoods that we can serve.
Thank you trustee Brown. And I would also like to add that this particular scope of work is really meant to complement the ongoing work that we, or the ongoing study that the district is under, which is the FICMAT study. And so in addition to, I believe, all of the great points that trustee Brown just brought up, this is a really proactive step on behalf of the district to ensure that we are responsive and moving forward in a very positive way to address some of the issues that we find, that we may be deficient in, and really to shore up our processes. And the implementation plan, we have a FICMAT study that is going to be forthcoming with a blueprint of, of kind of what it is that we should be working on and moving forward. And I believe that this particular scope of work is going to help facilitate that. So trustee Nabella? Reese?
Napolea. Too many. Yes. They have called me everything. It is a lot of money, and I will, I will echo what my other trustees have said, too, as well. We don't have any room for error. I think we all know that. At this particular point, it's got to be a very straight and narrow path, and we have absolutely no room to make any error whatsoever. I am hoping, and I think that this is the case, that even though the scope of work says that it's going to be to help with a May 1 ACCJC document, we're not doing this just for the document, and I think that that's really kind of what we're after. We are wanting to create structures and do things at the district that will manifest in a document, but that is not the be-all and end-all. The document is the, the outcome, but it is not the reason why we're doing this. So I, and then the other part that we wanted to ensure, and I don't know if you already said this, Jelena, is we are, we are also going to be interested in ensuring that there is going to be participatory governance in all aspects of this. And even though that is not articulated necessarily in the scope of work, we are going to embed it, and we're going to make sure that we breathe it, and I think, and I hope that today you all feel, and for the past few weeks, too, as well, that we are a board that is interested in accountability and oversight, and we're going to continue to that, and we're also going to continue to walk the participatory governance idea as part of how the framework through which we see things and do things.
Thank you. Trustee Weinstein.
Yeah, I think, I, I do strongly support this, even though it's very expensive. One of the things that I particularly like about it is the data analysis part of it. And when we're talking about enrollment management, we're also talking about... of the things that I particularly like about it is the data analysis part of it. And when we're talking about enrollment management, we're also talking about student success and student retention. And in addition to being able to bring more students in, I'm excited about the possibility of keeping them in and actually staying in and graduating. And I think that the CBT will help us be able to analyze it and help us increase our completion retention rates. So, I strongly support it.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, can we go ahead and have a roll call?
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. I will move us down to Action Items, 10.2. Consider Ratification of Amendment 2 to an Existing Contracted Services.
For the chair, don't we have a public hearing, or did we pull a public hearing?
No, that item has been pulled. 10.2. Consider Ratification of Amendment Number 2 to an Existing Contracted Services Agreement with Pacific Coast Tran for the District-Wide Schedule Maintenance HVAC Repairs, Replacement Services, and Contract Extension. Do we need a motion? We have a motion, and we need a second. It's been approved and seconded, and is there any discussion? Seeing none, can we have roll call, please?
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 10.3. Consider Ratification of Change Order Number 1 Amendment Number 1 with the Lincoln Aquatics for the Laney College Pools, Lateral Replacement Project in the Amount Not to Exceed $2,350. Do I have a motion?
Sure.
Moved by Trustee Brown, second by Trustee Withrow. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 10.4. Consider Approval Resolution 18/19-50 Declaring Results and Certifying Proceedings of Parcel Tax Election and Establishing the Citizens Oversight Committee. And can I just make a clarification on the establishment of committees? This is not establishing the committees. This is a formal process that we have to report back to the county office of voter registers, that we have set up a process, or will set up a process, to ensure that we are in receipt or will be in receipt of those who are interested in serving on the committee. So, there will be a very public process that allows for those interested parties to solicit us with their intention to serve on the committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Just a quick question. Did we change the language so that it makes sense now than before when we first looked at it?
So, as a point of clarification, there's no need to actually change the language. It's completely understood. This is protocol. And so, we're comfortable. And believe me, we've asked, I asked a lot about this.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 10.5. Consider Approval Resolution 18/19-51 Declaring Results and Certifying Proceedings of the School Bond Election and Establishing a Citizens Oversight Committee. Again, my same explanation follows.
So moved.
Motion to approve. Trustee Withrow, second. Trustee Brown, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 10.6. Consider Approval Final Reading on Proposed Board Policies. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Trustee Reese, yes.
Are we going to be going over or revising any of the other policies, or updating them, or discussing them at all? Okay. Good. Thank you. Okay. And just in case people didn't hear that, they will go through the shared governance process. Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy?
Yes.
Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes.
Trustee Brown?
Yes.
Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Item 10.7. Consider Approval of the Planning and Budget Integration Model Annual Integrated Planning Calendar for Fiscal Year 2019 and 2020. Motion to approve?
Yes. Move them.
Second? It's been hanging in there, 9:30. Any discussion? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Student Trustee Jordan?
Yes.
Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Trustee Handy? Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Discussion, clarification, just a question. Did this go through the participatory governance process in terms of the timeline, because that's part of the 10 plus 1? It did. Yes. Okay. Yes, for me.
Trustee Brown? Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Bonia?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Thank you. We will now move into 11.1. Board of Trustees Reports. Trustee Withrow?
Pass.
Trustee Handy?
Just real quickly, a few weeks ago, Trustee Withrow and Trustee Brown, myself, were in Washington for ACCT. Trustee Brown serving on Diversity Committee, myself on the Nominating Committee. And having the opportunity to meet with, wow, so we met with Subcommittee on Disability Assistance and Memorial Affairs. We also went, met with the Deputy Assistant Secretary for Community Colleges. We met with Dianne Feinstein's office, Kamala Harris's office, Mark DeSalle Nae's office, and Congresswoman Barbara Lee's office. And as always, no one really wants to go to Washington in February, but it is always so worth it to go there because it's there where we find out where the money is and where we find that we can bring back opportunities to support our students. So, even though we begrudgingly complain a lot, it is real worth it, even if you do have a middle seat on the way coming back home. The other thing that I wanted to say is, it's been a very interesting week for me, but my heater went out, and of course, it waits for the coldest days. But as a young man was explaining to me that there was a problem with my heat that I couldn't see, and he wanted me to look at the flames, he said the flames should be blue and they're yellow. And I'm going, so how do you know all of this stuff, Abdula? And he goes, well, I have a degree. I studied at Laney College, and I got a degree in HVAC. And I was like, oh my [inaudible] of this man. And I think he's come to my house maybe three times over the past 10 years, and always just so knowledgeable. And he started with one company, and now his own company's expanded so much. So, it is really a great story of what our students can come in and take advantage of and move forward. He still has to come back to my house again. But anyway, I thought that was just, it was just really exciting to see what, you know, the result. And he was so proud of it. And the other thing that I just learned, that Professor Julia Hare passed away in her sleep last night. And you may know the famous couple, Nathan Hare and Julia Hare. She was my professor at San Francisco State long ago, and she suffered from Alzheimer's, and her husband has held her diligently for all of these years. And I just, you know, just hold a moment of silence for an incredible educator, and also just a dynamic couple as well. Thank you.
Student Trustee Jordan?
Just really quickly, I wanted to thank VP Sifra for having our Peralta Student Council Meeting last Wednesday, which went over very well. Also, I would like to ask the board if we can write a resolution to present to Keith Welch's family from Laney College for his outstanding service as a Peralta student. The other thing that I wanted to say is, I'm really enjoying these last couple of meetings. I just want to say that we're working together really well. So, pat yourselves on the back. And the other thing that I wanted to say is that I just turned in my application to run for student trustee for next year. So, I'm pretty juiced. So, I've learned a lot here, and I'm really excited about the future. Thank you.
So, I'd like to actually do a restart with Trustee Withrow, who may have a few words to share with us.
I think all of us know that the chancellor is moving on, and I think every one of us recognizes, even though there may be issues that we take exception to, or whatever, that Chancellor Legere is very much a class act, very much a class act. He's a very professional leader. He's performed in an extremely difficult job, much more complex than 90% of the people would recognize. I think that just an awful lot of us look for the simple thing, simple answers, and he recognizes that we don't have simple answers. We don't have simple answers. He's a leader of the people. He is able to focus on what the priority should be. He motivates people to perform, but he recognizes that if you have a shortfall in the numbers, you can't accomplish everything. And I feel that he has prioritized so that we have accomplished a great deal. Just to put it into kind of a perspective, we know that the turnover of CEOs in California community colleges basically is around two years. It was the former president of CSU East Bay. He then went on to become the chancellor or the president of San Jose State University. And he's now the number two in the government of Afghanistan. And when he was in Japan a few months ago, he looked extremely relaxed. And we said, how could you be so relaxed with where you're at in the middle of a war zone and whatever? And he says, a whole lot easier than being president of a college. So, I think if I kind of puts it into perspective that, thank you very much for everything you've contributed and the time and effort that you've put in. I think everybody recognizes that you put in seven days a week, 365 days a year, and maybe too much. It's time for you to take a vacation. But thank you very much for everything you've done.
Trustee Brown?
I would like to echo Trustee Withrow's thanks to the chancellor for his leadership at Peralta, but I would like to speak from a different lens. There's, as Trustee Handy mentioned, I'm on the Diversity Committee and Chair-Elect of the Diversity Committee for the National Trustee Organization. It's something that Trustee Handy and a few trustees from Southern California talked me into. It was not something I had any intention of doing. But what I have observed in serving at the state level and the national level with regard to issues on diversity and leadership is that our chancellor has given us four presidents that we didn't have when I became a trustee. And he's given opportunities to talented people based on their promise, not the same that we get every time when a board goes out for a search and you see the same faces. And it's the people that had the opportunities historically, not the people who are overlooked or underrepresented. And change doesn't come through cowardice. Change comes through positive action. We have seen this. There were not four steady presidents, and we were in accreditation review five years ago. We hired, three years ago, we hired Chancellor Legere, and we have diversity and excellence representing our colleges. We are not facing a lack of accreditation. That had gone on for how many years? 11 years? So, I understand that there are those who are detractors, but do not mistake the progress. Do not forget your history, or we will be back in the same spot. We have demonstrated an opportunity to raise up our community and leadership in this institution that is not paralleled to other places. And if we discount those things, and if we demean and degrade ourselves, we cannot expect anyone to respect us. And the fight for public education and the fight for representation is real. It's not just in Alameda County where we're deep blue. It's a national fight, and we have to remember that we are stronger together. So, I thank the chancellor for his leadership. I thank him for his courage in believing and acting on issues of diversity. When I look at his executive cabinet, I do not see that anywhere else in the East Bay. I don't see that anywhere else in the state, and I certainly don't see it anywhere else in the nation. So, let us cherish what we have and thank those who have contributed, and be stronger as we move forward and go forth, and be nimble and creative in the way that we resolve our problems, and embrace our strengths and our talent. Because if we do not cherish ourselves and our community, there are plenty who would wipe us off of the board. And if you're not at the table, you're on the menu. And it's up to us to make sure that the people that live in this service area are not on the menu. So, thank you, Chancellor Legere, for your leadership. Thank you for the Fab Four that we have as presidents, and for the executive cabinet that is going to lead us into Peralta's future, and for a brilliant general counsel, all of which I cherish and do not take for granted.
Thank you. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese? Trustee Weinstein?
So, I would also like to thank the chancellor for his work here. I particularly want to thank him for his sense of humor. I'm not sure if people realize that about him, but he has a really good sense of humor, often laughs at my jokes, and that is extremely appreciated in a place where things are very somber most of the time. So, I thank him for helping me acclimate as I started as a new board member, and I'm not a new board member anymore. But I appreciate that I've asked you a lot of questions and that you've responded to a lot of my questions. So, I feel sad that you're leaving, but I also think it's very important that you take care of yourself. And I do feel optimistic that we will move ahead and that, you know, the responsibility is on all of us. And it's important that we take that responsibility and we embrace it and we move on. I'll also say that I was proud to be with the undocumented student resources I'll also say that I was proud to be with the undocumented student Resource Center Task Committee this week, and I'm proud of the work that they're continuing to do to make sure that there is a safe place for the Dreamers and the undocumented students at Peralta. And I hope that we will continue to support and help these students. I know that I will. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Weinstein. Trustee Handy?
Now being the most senior trustee at 16-plus years, I've seen a lot happen here. And I have to say that I believe you're the best chancellor we've had in the 16 years that I've been here. You're the first real chancellor that we've had in the 16 years that I've been here. We've had business people, we've had people who were presidents, but we have not had people who served in those roles. It is not an easy position for anyone to be in. And what really, really distresses me is that people's efforts to not give Peralta the credit it's due for the accomplishments that it's made and what it does for our community, and under your leadership. I was laughing, it wasn't funny, but laughing at the Chronicle's article that was printed 10 minutes after we made of the announcement that you would be retiring. So the narrative that they had written, they were just looking for a picture so they could print it again. And shame on them. Shame on everyone who wants to take away from Peralta what we offer for this community. But what, the things that they choose to say, what was funny to me is, they wanted to talk about $2,000 spent in 2017 for a greeting to our community and a Christmas card that had the trustee's pictures in it. But they did not mention the billion-dollar bond, the measures that were passed in November. And no one, no one else, no other chancellor can say that they've done that for this community. And so I don't think you let anyone else write your narratives. But I have to say, for these students sitting out here, and the students that are not here, and for those community members that are silent but are sitting outside, we are so grateful for the opportunities. We are so grateful for people who were not given the opportunity by anyone else to serve as president because you believed in them. You believed in, and you fought with us for every last one of them. And grateful for the general counsel and for the strong women that we have in our administrative office and all the, and finally, bringing someone to settle our IT challenges. And if we can just keep people out of this way, I think we'll do great with that. You have done some amazing things to uplift the four campuses that had challenges when you came here, and will continue to have challenges. But you have done it graciously, and you have been so amazing to us. And so though I regret, and they're again trying to write your narrative, I realize that you are retiring and that your health has a good, great part of that, and that people should know that you ignored some warning signals for your health because you thought it was important to get that bond down. You would not stay home and rest because you thought it was important. So the legacy that he leaves for Peralta should not be ignored. So I value your friendship and your health much more than you sitting in that seat. So I say farewell, but we will see you again. But thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done for Peralta and for this community.
Thank you, student trustee.
So enjoy your retirement and all of your wife's awesome cooking. And I just want to say, on behalf of students, you've taken a lot of time out of your busy schedule to meet with students and to listen to things that we wanted to participate in. And we've had several opportunities that have helped us grow and been able to take back to other students in our Peralta community. And so I just want to say thank you for that and believing in students.
Trustee Reese?
I didn't say anything earlier because I haven't known you for very long. So I felt like my ability to say as much as everybody else would not be enough. But I will say a few things. When we first met and when we went out to dinner with Jelena, I had asked you, what are the three traits that you would articulate to describe yourself? And what I left with was that your generosity of heart, your desire to do good, and also that at the core of it all, you love to teach. That's why you are even in this. And I will say that it is true, because you said this to the board as a kind of goodbye response, that nobody will understand what it was like to be in your shoes, and that is true. It is so, it's so much easier for individuals to judge than it is to truly understand. And so with that said, I will say that I am very fortunate to have come to know you for a short period of time. You certainly have that je ne sais quoi. And I am very, again, fortunate to also know that you are doing what's good for you in terms of your health and taking care of your family. And when I walked into your room before the board meeting, I had said that the most important thing in life is the things that are not quantifiable, and those are the people that we love and our family and such. So thank you.
Thank you for that. Chancellor, I also want to thank you, appreciate you in more ways than you can imagine. Everything that you've brought to this district, you brought your family, not just you, but you actually brought your family to us. And that was very, I think that was very touching. I don't want to tell everyone your personal stuff, but it was wonderful having your family as part of the student body here as well. And I appreciate that. You will be missed. I will miss you. I will miss our interactions. And I wish you well. I wish you well. Thank you so much. With that, we will have a announcements read? Oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. I had this other piece written down. And I think, Chancellor, I hope you don't mind me sharing this, but at your request, traditionally, we would have had a celebration of some sort tonight. But at your request, because you have asked that we postpone until you're able to bring your family here, so your immediate family is here, but we know that you have a much larger family that is far away. And so know that there will be a celebration of the chancellor's tenure to be announced soon. TBD.
And one of the people that I really wanted to be here is my granddaughter. Today's her seventh birthday. When I called to sing happy birthday in French for her, she, the first thing she asked me is, because my birthday is tomorrow, is, "How old are you going to be tomorrow, grandpa?" And when I told her 63, she went, "Whoa." So I hope to have her here when we do something for the chancellor. So thank you for postponing that and respecting that.
Thank you, thank you. And happy birthday to your granddaughter. Yes.
We're not going to sing in French? I only know the Patti LaBelle song. Let's just keep going.
Chancellor, from all of us, a happy early birthday to you.
The next regular board meeting will be held on March 12th at District Office Boardroom, and the board extends its heartfelt condolences to the friends and family on the passing of Laney student Keith Welch. We adjourn the board meeting in his memory and take a moment of silence in his honor. Madam President, that concludes the announcements for this evening.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.